Good evening, everyone. I am going to reconvene the July 7th Board of Supervisors meeting. We did have a closed meeting, so we need to certify it.
Yes. Do each of you certify that, to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were discussed or considered by the Board of Supervisors in the closed meeting?
And this is a roll call. Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you. All right. Let me get the public hearings going. We've got several tonight, and the first one is public hearing considering amending the Chapter 151.
Yeah, yeah. I believe there was an action that the board wanted to take coming out of a closed meeting.
You are correct.
I don't know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we didn't forget.
Mr. Goffe's on line.
I'll go ahead and just put it in the form of a motion.
Yes.
Yeah. I just want to put forward a motion regarding litigation involving Demetrius Inez-Gwynn pro se respondent versus Rappahannock County that we authorize the county attorney to intercede on the county's behalf in that matter as a defendant.
With Daniel Pond as co-counsel?
Sure. Yep.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Right now, can I go into the public hearing? Okay. All right. So this evening, we have a public hearing to consider amending Chapter 151 to add Article, what is that, 19, cigarette tax to the county code?
Yes, just a very brief statement here. The county's budget considered potentially introducing a cigarette tax at the rates allowed by the State of Virginia Code. Staff has prepared an ordinance with the county attorney, as well as the representatives from the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board, consistent with the ordinance used by the other members of that body. The ordinance is provided here with meeting materials and has been available for public review at my office for a few weeks now. An advertisement for this public hearing was placed in the local newspaper for the requisite period required by Code of Virginia 2.21427. Before the board could consider adopting this ordinance, which is step one of two for this particular program, you first need to hear from the public at this public hearing.
All right. So at this time, anyone wishing to speak with regards to this item only, please raise your hand, be recognized, and come up and tell us your name and your district.
Yes, my name is Sharon Propper, and Supervisor, right here, Christine. I was concerned about the cigarette tax because I don't smoke myself, but I was concerned about it because it was talking about designating the money, they didn't know where it was going to go, and then certain people get it, administrative people get some of the money. And I was just concerned because if you're going to tax cigarettes, there's a lot of people that smoke, and it's already hard enough to try to afford a pack of cigarettes. It's outrageous already. So there's already tax on top of tax, just like the Tea Party years ago, many years ago. They threw the tea in the ocean because of taxes, unnecessary taxes. I think that the cigarette tax is an unnecessary tax. I tried to get in touch with Christine to see what she thought about it, but I wasn't able to get in touch with her. But I was concerned about that situation because it's, I mean, what's next? Toilet paper? Everybody needs toilet paper. We're going to tax the toilet paper next? What are we going to do? I mean, there's a lot of people that smoke. I do not like smoking. I do not care for smoking. But when I see that people's rights, they're talking about having some kind of penalty if you don't comply to this tax, then you have some kind of a penalty. So that's kind of bad if you have a tax on cigarettes and you get a penalty and then possibly get jail time for your cigarette that you didn't pay taxes somehow on it. Or maybe you got cigarettes from somewhere else. And so then they want to see your receipt. Well, you got cigarettes from somewhere else that didn't have as much taxes. And so now you're going to get a penalty for that and have to go to court and jail and everything for a cigarette tax? What's that? So I don't know. I mean, who came up with this? I mean, I saw that other counties are doing it, but I mean, this is Rappahannock County. I think we have more freedom than that. I mean, I understand that we're looking for possibly more revenue, but the cigarette tax than the toilet paper or whatever else that we have to have, now cigarettes is not something that you have to have, but people that smoke them believe they have to have it. So I'm very much against this tax. And then you don't even know who exactly is going to get that, and then the administrative is going to get a piece of the pie, and then this one's going to get a piece of the pie. And it just sounds like it's a roundabout thing that's not really designated in the paper. It's not really designated as to where that tax would go. I could understand if possibly that tax went to some kind of medical procedures, you know, for people that smoke and have issues that come up with cancers and stuff like that. But I mean, this just sounds like it's going round and round and round. Different people, like I said, get a piece of the pie. It's not really going toward any specific destination. Everybody's got their hand in it, but it's not going to any particular place. Thank you.
Ron McIlroy-Jackson District. I had not planned to speak on this, but an interesting issue has been raised, I think, in that we're somehow putting concentration on a cigarette tax, which is not going to raise a significant amount of money in Rappahannock County. But we refuse to have discussions on a business tax, a reasonable business tax. All the surrounding counties have business taxes. We do not. Why are we spending our time on a cigarette tax? Let's talk about a reasonable business tax in Rappahannock. Thank you.
Not seeing anyone else in the courtroom. We do have a few people online. Anyone wishing to speak with regards to this public hearing, please have your Zoom hand All right. Not seeing a Zoom hand raised, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the board.
Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chairman, just to keep this moving along, I'll make a motion to move to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 151 to add Article 19, cigarette tax to the county code.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second discussion?
Madam Chair, thank you. I intend to vote no on this motion, and I want to explain why. First of all, the Baldwin family, very, very significant economic contributors in my voting district, and I would not be doing right by them as one of the largest business owners in my voting district if I supported this. Second, on principle, and not to beat a dead horse, I know that I talked at some length about this this afternoon. But to Mr. McIlroy's point, here we're chasing what amounts to de minimis revenue that could have easily been offset with reduced expenditures, particularly from the school system. But yet, we were put into a mad scramble position on a budget shortfall driven by the school, and the cigarette tax was brought in as one piece of an aggregation of a variety of revenue sources to basically solve a shortfall that could have been solved easily by asking the school system and the school board to do the right thing and ask us from a general fund transfer for less. But because none of that happened, we ended up trying to bridge this revenue gap in various ways, including the cigarette tax on principle, because no hard questions truly were placed on the school system, and no accommodations from the school system were made to reduce their budget request to us. I'm not going to put a burden on a key business owner in my voting district to solve a separate problem. So I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Along similar lines, I would just add, I mean, I think we first probably discussed this cigarette tax two or three years ago when Mr. Frazier was on the board, and both he and I spoke against it. And I know it's a little anecdotal, but we do have an Aunt Shirley down in Georgia, and Aunt Shirley lived on the right side of the North Carolina-Georgia line to have a package store. Aunt Shirley was one of the wealthiest women I knew because she lived on the right side of the line where you could have the package store. So if you're taxing people for doing business, they will find other ways to do business. I just think it's unwise and unnecessary, and as my peers said, not much money, and is the juice even worth the squeeze? Probably not, for all the work and advertisements and everything else you've had to put into it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just say while I know it's not a popular tax, no tax is popular. I will just say that you are paying this tax in just about every county that touches Rappahannock County. And when we drive out of the county to go to the doctor, to do general shopping, to go to the dentist, to go see a movie, probably to see family and friends, chances are you are paying this tax and maybe even more in another county. And then, not only are you paying that tax, you're dropping it in that county's till. So while I would envision, you know, who knows what could happen in years to come? Maybe this is revisited. I would just ask everyone to take, to understand at least this way, your money is staying in the county, and it's paying for services that serve your neighbors, yourself, your children, your grandchildren, your nieces, your nephews. It serves our first responders, our educators certainly, our social services. So for that reason, while I do realize it's not a lot, I think if nothing else, we should, we probably all learned over the last few years, if not your whole life, every little bit counts. So for that reason, I will be in support of this.
All right. We have a motion and a second. And is this roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay. Roll call vote. Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Whitson?
Nay.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also. All right. Let's see, going into...
Okay. So as I noted, there's a multi-part process. There's also an ordinance needed for the board to join the authorized joining of the agreement to join the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board, and that ordinance, because Virginia Code requires a public hearing. And so this is the public hearing on the ordinance to join the tax board, and the ordinance and the board agreement have been available in my office, are available with the meeting materials, and knowing that everything's been properly advertised, you can now hear from the public before you can consider that ordinance.
All right. So same situation. Anyone wishing to speak? Please be recognized, come up, and give us your name and your district. That is not a surprise, I guess. Anyone online wishing to speak? All right. I will close the public hearing.
I want to move it along. I'll make a motion to adopt the provided ordinance and authorize the chair to sign the provided Blue Ridge cigarette tax agreement.
You have a motion? That was a second?
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion and a second discussion?
I did just want to apologize to Ms. Propper that I missed her call and didn't get back to her, and I thank her for coming out tonight to talk about this with me, and it's always a pleasure to see you.
All right. Not seeing anybody else that wants to speak. I'll go ahead and take the roll call vote. Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Whitson?
Nay.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also. Ordinance on zoning. Updated fee schedule for zoning subdivision, building, and erosion and sediment control.
During your budget process, there's discussion from staff and assumptions in staff. The county administrator recommended budgets that your permit fees be reviewed and increased to generate approximately 10% additional revenue. That assumption carried through the budget, including the version that was adopted. The fees in the past have been set by resolution. Zoning fees, according to the Code of Virginia, must be set by ordinance. And so this public hearing is to consider an ordinance that would set the zoning subdivision, erosion, sediment control, and building fees all in one fell swoop, just to make sure they are all on an even footing. So there's a cover ordinance that references two exhibits. Those exhibits are Exhibit 1, that have the subdivision and zoning fees, and then Exhibit 2, that have the building and erosion, sediment control fees. Because the zoning and subdivision fees are subject to public hearing in accordance with Section 1522204, they must pass through the Planning Commission and have a public hearing there, which occurred, and there was a recommendation from the Planning Commission to adopt. However, I understand that recommendation suggested that the highest fees from the surrounding counties be considered, albeit for this public hearing, you could only adopt fees as high as those who were advertised. And two, that the board consider waiving the fees for zoning appeals in the event an appellant is successful. And I'm not sure what stage the success would occur, whether at the BCA...
It was at the end, and it would be a refund. I mean, obviously, we couldn't waive it at the beginning, speculating whether or not they'd be successful. It would need to be a refund at the end of the process.
Right. So the BCA could side with an appellant or not, and then it could go to the circuit court. So I think there's some nuance there on when a refund would be due.
Usually, appeal processes have time clocks attached to them, so when the time clock runs out on the last opportunity to appeal, I would imagine it would be done.
Sure. So you could absolutely adopt an ordinance with fee schedule identifying when certain fees should be waived. I think that's fine. That's less than was advertised, so the board would be well within your right to do that. I would just ask for specificity on what you want, how specifically you want that done. As I noted, it was advertised, technically, the building, erosion, sediment control do not require public hearing, but I think it's good to do them all together. So it's been advertised properly. It's here before the body. All the documents have been available, and before you consider this ordinance, you must hear from the public.
Okay. Ms. Smith, do you want to clarify anything before we get to the public?
No, I thought it was, I mean, it was pretty straightforward. The prevailing sentiment on the Planning Commission was that we should increase these fees to the high end because these are user-based fees for people with applications before the county with real-world costs associated with them. And to that end, we should look at what our peers are doing in adjoining counties and base our costs accordingly. And some of them are substantially more than what we charge. Obviously, it was a little late in the game for this year to make that recommendation or for this round to make that recommendation, but the idea to waive the fees if the appellant should prevail, that did originate from the public, and we all agreed that that was the correct thing to do because if you've prevailed in the courts, you should get your money back.
All right. Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'll open this public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Come up and give us your name and your district.
Diane Bruce, Berryville. I agree with what Christine has just said about if there is an appeal that is successful, the appellant should be refunded the cost. I think the cost now maybe is $500, and it's to be raised to $600, I think. I think there's probably been some discussion among staff and perhaps you that our expenses have gone up. It costs more to put it in the newspaper, but there won't be many appeals. There haven't been many appeals, so it's not like we're going to get five or six of these every month. We get one or two every once in a while unless more and more mistakes are made. So I would urge you to adopt that part of this motion, that if an appellant is successful, the fee should be returned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. I'll just echo those same sentiments. I think we all know that there have been a couple of instances where there have been appeals that were successful, and it does seem punitive for citizenry to have to pony up that money, be successful, and then, you know, eat the costs. So I think that's a fair thing to do. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. There's two people? One person? Still online?
One is us.
It's us?
One of them is us.
Okay. Oh, yes. Good point. Anyone wishing to speak online? Raise your Zoom hand. All right. Not seeing a hand raised. I will close the public hearing.
Based on current permitting activity, I think we've probably reviewed this, plus 10% on the aggregate fees that we're collecting now looks like what? What are we talking about?
Seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
I was going to say eighteen thousand.
And how many pennies? Sorry. Just kidding.
Total game changer.
Right.
I don't budget that much.
Yeah. And of course, it varies based on what's happening in the market and...
Twenty thousand.
All sorts of things. And we don't know that these targeted fees will get us there, but these seem to be appropriate when considering fees from surrounding locations. And of course, the board discussed these at an earlier meeting, tweaked them before they went onto the Planning Commission for their public hearing.
And you guys on the Planning Commission voted unanimously in support of it.
Unanimously with the idea about the appeal also being refunded. That was, I think, important to everyone.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to move to adopt the provided ordinance, adopting the updated fee schedules as presented, and that will capture your Planning Commission discussion, correct?
Let's, no. Presented is written here, so...
I'm trying to pull it up right here.
Let's modify it if you want.
Okay, I want to modify it.
You would modify Exhibit 1...
Yes.
...to change the appeals fee from $600 to be $600 except refunded upon...
Upon...
When? When the BCA finds in their favor or...
When the time clock is run out on appeals.
Yeah. Yes, exactly. So there's no possibility to win on appeal. Does that make sense? Like, the time clock has run out. So the BCA rules in the administrator's favor.
Yep.
And then they don't exercise that next step.
Okay. And if they do exercise that next, I mean, you, the board could...
Out of the circuit court, does it go to...
It could. But the board could appeal.
Yes.
If you wanted to.
Yes, but I think that that's captured by what Ms. Smith said, which is that once it's fully exhausted, then you know it's done.
I just want to make sure I'm writing this down right.
Yeah, I know. It is sort of confusing. Did you guys have language that you talked about?
We didn't have language, but I think, having been through appeals, it's eminently evident when the appeal is over.
Yeah, it's not great.
Everyone's opportunity to appeal has been exhausted, and it's clear who has prevailed. At that point, the refund should be issued.
Yeah, so long as the motion that I'm making will allow you to capture that concept in language, because I think it's a really, really good idea. I think we have...
Yeah. If you fight City Hall and win, you shouldn't have to also pay.
Madam Chairman, I know it is a bit out of order, but Ms. Bruce is asking to be identified in the audience for additional comment, and in light of her previous long tenure with the county, I was wondering if perhaps we might hear from her.
It's with regards to this. Yes, ma'am.
Court.
You got it.
He's satisfied.
Oh.
You, I just have a question. You all are referencing appeals.
Zoning go to the BCA for adjudication. So that's how they work.
And they were all go to BCA? Okay, thank you.
So then I'll amend my motion to, I'll withdraw my motion, make another motion, which is move to adopt the ordinance adopting the updated fee schedule with the added language, but refunded if appellant prevails when court remedies have expired. Does that work?
I think so.
All right. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
If that's a motion, I will second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second and any discussion. Hearing none. I think it's a roll call vote.
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also. Public hearing, special exception number 25-03-01. I'm going to get it wrong. Remician?
Remician. Yeah.
TM number 37-22B, single-family dwelling in Highway Commercial Zoning District. Go for it.
Pursuant to 17036A, applicant has requested a special exception to allow a single-family dwelling unit in the Highway Commercial Zoning District. The property is located at 11761 Lee Highway, and it's identified by tax number 3722B. The property is 1.04 acres in size. The existing home was built in 1963 and therefore a legal non-conforming use. The previous owner had begun remodeling the home prior to obtaining the proper permits. The property was then sold. Now, the current owner would like to correctly finish that work that had been started, including in addition. With a non-conforming status, the owner would only be able to do 50% of its current fair market value and only 50% of the gross floor area. With the combination of these two, the remodel to fix everything would not be permitted. The structure has only ever been used as a single-family dwelling. The Health Department had no opposition to the request, nor did the Sewer Authority as they already have one EDU, and that use will not change. V. dot comminant that this request would not produce any additional traffic. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this on May 21st, in which they tabled it in order to receive additional information, specifically a survey plat, which has been provided. The survey plat shows the house location in regards to the distances from property lines and that it is not in a flood plain. The Planning Commission wants, they took this application back up at their June 18th meeting, and with this new survey, they voted or recommended approval by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, anything you'd like to add? I thought that was a really good description, and I would thank the applicant for bearing with the Planning Commission and supplying the additional materials we requested. I know you were also scheduled for the April meeting of the Planning Commission, which unfortunately, we had to cancel due to lack of a quorum. So thank you for bearing with the process and supplying all of the documentation we needed to feel confident in our recommendation.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for this specific hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Come on up and give us your name and your district. Come on up and give us your name and your district.
Linda Orfila, Piedmont. And I'm at 17 Black Locus Lane, adjacent to the house that we were speaking of. I don't really know how this will impact me and my home now or in the future. So I'd like to hear a little more like that, if that's possible. I don't know if we're talking about some kind of setbacks on boundaries in the front or the side or the back. I don't know if that affects the current right-of-way. And also, I'm a little bit wondering about the numerical number of this location. I thought it was number five, but I see that it's not here, which also makes me wonder about the fire and rescue. About seven-plus years ago, I had a very bad experience because of trees that were put, Leland cypresses that were put in an existing driveway. It used to be circular. The Leland cypresses were put on the driveway and the fire and rescue did not then update their log. So that impacted me greatly. Also, I'm here in part because I don't really know how this impacts me. And I can say that recently, and maybe within the last two months or less, there was a fire at that location, a bushfire, that apparently was intended to be in control but went out of control. It did come onto my property a little bit, which was not really an issue to me because my home was safe. But what was issue to me is the chemicals that were then used to put that fire out. And so everyone understands that we're not talking water. We're talking about chemicals. And so that does concern me. I'm surprised that's not a flood zone because we do have the river right there, but that's great for insurance reasons that it's not. I don't think I have anything else I want to reflect right now. So I'm happy to have a seat and listen to anything that's, that needs to be said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. No one in the audience? If there's anyone on Zoom, please raise your hand. Okay. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Christine, I don't know if you can...
I don't know if, I'll be happy to speak to the questions that were asked and look to Ms. Summers also and the applicant for additional information. But my understanding of this application is that the work that's been being done at this house is being, being done without permitting. So the good news for you, Ms. Orfilia, is that the work that started at the house next door, which has turned into really an eyesore, neglected property, that work will be completed. It will not expand the footprint any further, correct me if I'm wrong, please, Ms. Summers, than what is already in existence. And it will be a completed home based on the work that has been done to date. It is only approved for residential use, so you will not be getting a business moving in there and expanding the footprint and doing all kinds of things, which they could do easily because it's in Highway Commercial. So what you'll be getting, you'll be getting a neighbor who will be finishing the eyesore next door to you and cleaning up someone else's mess with this application. And I haven't talked to your neighbor very much, but she seems like a nice lady. And if you all would talk to each other and express your concerns about how to, you know, what you want on your side of the property line and what you've got to undertake on your side of the property line, I think, I think you all would get along very well. Because I've talked to Rachel a couple of times in the course of these meetings, and she, what she's doing with this property, I don't think many people would do. She is truly cleaning up someone else's mess. So I hope that helps.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion?
I just, I just want to understand what, because I don't have the use tables in our zoning ordinance in front of me. I just want to understand what triggered the special exception permit. Is it that Highway Commercial zoning districts, if a non-conforming use is furthered or expanded, that that function requires a special exception to...
No. It's attached to the expansion of the footprint of the home, which was done without permitting. And it was, it's also attached to the dollar amount of the increase in the value of the home.
Right. But the special, in the use table, I know that in other section, in other parts of the use table, there's a line regarding non-conforming uses requiring, that, that kicks in a special exception.
Right. But this has only ever been used as a home. It's never fallen out of use as a home.
I just want to know why we're here.
For all the uses that are existing and non-conforming...
Yep.
...they can continue as long as the use continues, is not discontinued for more than two years. However, you may not enlarge that use. If you seek to enlarge that use...
That's what triggers the special exception permit request?
That is correct.
The setbacks are all still in place for the property. I'm glad that too. We did request the survey specifically to address whether or not the setbacks were all still in place. And the setbacks were all still fine. There's no concern with that. And we looked at the floodplain, and it's not in a floodplain. So there's no concerns there. I hope, I hope folks agree that in the end, this is the best possible use for this home.
Yeah. And Christine, I appreciate what you just articulated, and I think, did it beautifully. And it reminds me of, there was opposition to a short-term rental near the Blue Rock property that was an eyesore. And it just seemed like it was a heck of an improvement, a step in the right direction to get out of the way of someone who wanted to do right by a property and improve the overall look and feel of our county. So I applaud the applicant here, and thank you for your words.
I hope you're getting an attractive new home next door and also a good neighbor.
All right. Anyone wish to make a motion?
Oh, I guess this is Piedmont District. So I'll make a motion that we approve the Remiciana. Is that the last time I have to say your last name? Is it close enough? Please excuse me. Application, as we've received it from the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The West Side is the best side, y'all. I hope y'all are good neighbors now.
All right. Moving on to public hearing, special exception 25-03-02, Sperryville Schoolhouse owner and Rising Water Brewing applicant.
I really do try. I really do. It's so hard. Rising Water Brewing is requesting to operate a brewery pursuant to 17036F and 17067E. The property is located at 12016 Lee Highway, and it's 4.12 acres in size and zone Highway Commercial. The proposed brewery will be located in the auxiliary building beside the old schoolhouse. Rising Water Brewery is a family-operated business utilizing a 3.5-barrel brewing system to craft small-batch beer. They plan to brew beer and serve their beer on-site. They plan to occupy roughly about three-fourths of the building. Brewing will occur on the backside of the building, and the front half will be a customer area where beer, wine, and limited food will be served. The Water and Sewer Authority commented they will consider their request after the county issues a special exception, as they see no reasons why they could not issue a permit but will need to make application with the details if approved. The Health Department commented that the property was on public sewer, and the well would be regulated through the Office of Drinking Water, and they forwarded their application onto them. VDOT's comments first came back where they needed to address some issues. The applicant and the property owner worked with VDOT, and VDOT came back to say that they had no objections and stated they would need a land use permit for special events to ensure adequate traffic control. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on May 21st. At that meeting, they tabled the request and requested additional information. They took the matter back up at their June 18th meeting, and after reviewing the additional information submitted by the applicant, they recommended approval with the following conditions. A VDOT land use permit shall be obtained for any event in which heavier traffic is anticipated. No more than six events per year shall be held of more than 100 persons. No more than one every three weeks. Compliance with the Department of Drinking Water and the Water Sewer Authority. All parking must be on-site. And I will note, we did evaluate the current parking at the schoolhouse, and there is enough parking there for this use. Compliance with Virginia ABC. Any new lighting and signage shall be in conformance with applicable county ordinances. Hours of operation shall be from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday. Extended 10:00 p.m. closure on Friday and Saturday. No amplified music after 8:00 p.m. on Friday or Saturday, one night only, June through October, and beer production not to exceed 7,500 gallons. An applicant and property owner are present if you have any questions.
Thank you. Do you want to speak to anything before we open the public hearing? Okay.
Michelle did note that this was properly advertised in the newspaper. Of course, with code of Virginia 1522204. Also, I want to point out, as I have before, that Rappahannock County Code, Section 17047C, states that uses which would normally not be allowed in a particular zoning district may be allowed by special permit or special exception because they impose conditions and restrictions on the use in order to make it compatible with the byright uses in that zoning district. And then 47G, a special permit or a special exception will only be granted if the applicant can satisfy the requirements of Article 6 and the proposed use is otherwise lawful permitted. The burden is on the applicant to satisfy such requirements.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'll open up this public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak?
Kevin Craditor, Piedmont District. Former co-owner of Hopkins Ordinary Ale Works, which was located in a commercial, what was it? Village commercial. Thank you. And we had a restriction on our permit for music. And we weren't allowed to have live amplified music. This restriction is a little bit different. We were able to have non-live amplified music anytime we wanted, and we did. Played it outside every day we were open. And as far as I know, there were no complaints, no problems. So I think that the restriction on this application is a little stringent, and I'd like to see that relaxed.
Thank you.
Diane Bruce, Sperryville. I was looking at the application, and one thing I noticed in the application is that the applicant is supposed to give notice to property owners who or surround the property, even if it's across a road. And they gave notice to Shaw's, which is a garage, and to Cliff Miller, two addresses. I'm wondering, should they have given notice to the people who live on Water Street, who will be right beside this operation? Have they given notice to the Thorson people? Have they given notice to the hotel? Have they given notice to Barbara Adolphy and Ray Bach? Have they given notice to the Dodsons and on down Water Street, all of which or whom are adjacent to this property, but it's across the road from Water Street? I just noticed on the application, it's not unlike the Red Barn application we had a year or so ago, where they had to list things in that application. And they listed the nearest hospital was in Tappahannock, and law enforcement was in Warren County. And that application came through, and you all ruled on that application eventually. But it got to you with that kind of mistaken information. I mean, it should have been squared away before it ever got up here and became a mess. Here it is again, where I'm thinking, according to what the form says, that if you are across the road, then you should list that you have given those people notice. I've not seen any of those people, excuse me, at this meeting or the Planning Commission meeting. I don't believe they know about it. I'm going to tell you, most of you know where I live. I can hear the Thursday night concerts at my house across the river and along field. It's not annoying, doesn't bother me. I'm just telling you, noise travels. And I think if you have amplified music in the lot of the schoolhouse, it's going to be quite annoying to people who live in those homes or in those B&Bs or Airbnbs or whatever they're going to occupy. So I think the application is not complete so far, unless I'm missing something. I, I would worry about amplified music, and I didn't understand something about they could only have amplified music June and July through October. What about the other months? So I didn't understand how that was explained. Like, it's just these months where we're telling you what you can and can't do, but the rest of the months, we're not telling you. I'm not sure that I read that right. I guess that's it. I don't have any opposite, any complaint about the business. I think it's too big. I think it's going to be chaotic. I think there are going to be lots of issues with too much drinking and the noise that goes with it. But that's today's society. I'm mostly concerned about the neighborhood knowing about it before it's approved. Thank you.
Ron McLeod, Jackson District. I'm a little confused here because the property that we're talking about already has a restaurant and bar on the property. And how do you, when, when you're talking about parking, when you're talking about noise or whatever, how are we going to differentiate between where it's coming from? It's, it's been an established business area for years. And, and I don't see how you can, you know, if you don't have restrictions on the existing restaurant and bar, this is really not any different. And, and breweries don't tend to have, you know, late-night activities or whatever to, to a great extent. So, but like I said, from the enforcement end, how do you enforce it? Because what if they, what if on one night, they, you know, both establishments decide to have bans? Is there going to be any restrictions on Black Twig as far as their hours or whatever? Because I don't think there are at this point. So that's something realistically that we have to deal with, with this situation. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Ruth Keiger, and I live in Sperryville. And my issue is not exactly with the business itself. My issue is, was just constantly adding on more usage to the water and sewer system. And I'm very opposed to the increase that we just recently were hit with. And the reasoning is that we need bigger tanks, we need more tanks. And then we keep approving more people to expand their businesses or add to it. And the residents are the ones who are having to pay this price, and I have a real problem with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth. Not seeing anybody else in the courtroom. Open it up to the folks online. If you wish to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. If you wish to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. Not seeing any hands raised. I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the board.
Well, this is in Piedmont District, and we did hear it at the Planning Commission. And I am grateful to the applicant for bringing back additional information as requested also at the Planning Commission. I would just say, in terms of the Water and Sewer Authority, that I understand people's concerns. I have the same concerns. I think that there are major problems with the Water and Sewer Authority. And I don't know many people who would disagree with that statement. That being said, I can't presume to know better than they do. And this business will have to chart their own course with the Water and Sewer Authority. Have you all received approval from them yet for your application?
I'm Robert Alfred. Now live in the Piedmont District also. But no, we have not received approval. As Christine mentioned, they kind of just kicked the can down the road and said they wanted to wait till we got approval from you guys.
Yeah, so the Water and Sewer Authority will have to do their own work as to whether or not they can supply you water. But I think most people have concerns with the Water and Sewer Authority and if they can even, if they can even meet the by right needs of Sperryville, let alone the special permit needs. But that is something that they need to assess. That's not something for this board to dictate to them. That's up to the chairman.
We have closed the public hearing, so we're on to the board discussion, unless you have something that you think will really change the...
I just wanted to comment on what Christine said about wanting to approve the board.
I think we're okay on that. We definitely have been listening.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
I just wanted to say that I wanted them to agree with my concern. And they said come to you guys.
Well, they meet again on Thursday, so I'll see you there. Yeah, well, they are appointees. And you're looking at the one supervisor that didn't vote for the way that they've charted their course currently. So I agree with you. And I think the solution that's currently in place is a far bigger problem than most people would ever contemplate. And, you know, we're going to pay. That's the problem. And in the meantime, ultimately, Rappahannock County will pay because 40% of the meals and lodging revenue is generated by Sperryville. And it will be discouraging for residents, not only residents, but also for businesses to relocate in the village, which is really unfortunate. But I can't dwell on that too much. We really just need to work on this application. But I do hear what you're saying, Ruth. And I always appreciate your rich history with the Water and Sewer Authority and your vast knowledge on that topic. For this particular application, the Planning Commission worked through it in multiple rounds. It's a pretty ambitious application. It is not a by right use. It is a special use in the district. And for those reasons, we can and should impose conditions upon it which we might not impose on by right uses. And I think the by right, or the conditions that we worked to craft at the Planning Commission level were very reasonable and agreeable to the applicant in the course of that meeting. And that's how we arrived where we did. I did do some additional legwork based on comments regarding the noise, which I think is a real sensitivity and that this board has been sensitive to previously on other applications, such as the RSM application. And I believe on Mount Medhi also, we may have imposed some noise. Montpelier did, but that was a previous board. And specifically, there's a few different ways the board has approached noise at boundary lines before specifically, which I do think this should include because it is in the village proper and there are a lot of people living in close proximity to this property. The phraseology on the RSM approval was the use should not cause noise greater than 65 decibels on the A weighted scale measured at the property line for their tax map. And that decibel is equivalent basically to normal human conversation. Or if I remember correctly, low level human conversation, which would not be considered unpleasant to listen to. The other way it was dealt with on the Montpelier application was that music was permitted as described in the application so long as there was no discernible sound at the property line with two or more adjacent owners. The restriction would be stated clearly to any organization or private party renting the property as well. So I would just mention those two considerations and also bring them to the business owners for consideration that I do think that that is a reasonable additional requirement for this application. And the thought for why June through October versus November through May is that with the foliage and things leafing out on the property, that does affect the way that noise carries.
Thanks, I appreciate the comments about concerns related to wastewater treatment facilities in Sperryville. I served on the Sewer Authority over there for quite some time, including during a time when two nano breweries were approved. And at that time, the arguments were the same. And we, from a Sewer Authority perspective, were very concerned about any adverse effect on the waste, already old at that time, wastewater treatment facilities. The truth is that what we learned from that experience with Pendrood and its original location, then with Hopkins Ordinary, Kevin just spoke to that brewery, which he and his wife owned. The adverse effects or any effect on the wastewater treatment capacity system operations is not only minimal, it's almost less in some cases than a resident because of the separate conditions and requirements that the Sewer Authority itself imposes on nano breweries in a setting like that. For example, and I'm not, I'm not trying to telegraph what the authority might do, but I know that in terms of disposing of unconsumed beer for the sake of protecting an aging system, there are requirements put on these brewery owners to put everything in five gallon buckets and not put it down the drain. And so I think that there's a strong track record that shows, number one, the idea of conflating the struggles of the wastewater treatment system in Sperryville, which are big struggles. And this notion that a brewery is going to make it worse or cause more problems, I think is not necessarily true. And I would say that if what I said just now is correct, that nano breweries on this scale really are not having any adverse effect on that wastewater treatment system in Sperryville, then arguably, the additional revenue that's gained from businesses like this could potentially offset rate increases that would otherwise be the burden of residents. So I just want to be clear that from my experience, and I'm speaking very, I'm speaking very sincerely in understanding your position and where you're coming from. It is not my experience that the breweries on this tiny scale with reasonable conditions placed upon them and how they dispose of brewed liquids, it's not my experience that that causes a problem, even in Sperryville with as old of a system as that is. On the music front, I do have some questions. And maybe Christine or someone else can educate me on this. But, and the language of the, the language of the condition related to music was not clear to me. And it sounds like it wasn't clear to others who spoke during public comment or during the public hearing, rather. But I want to understand, number one, you have, you have a by right food establishment, Black Twig operating. And I'd like to know what they're allowed to play in terms of music or what kind of limits are placed on them. And then number two, we heard from the former owner of Hopkins Ordinary, which is across the street. I'd like to understand clearly what that permit allowed and did not allow. And finally, I would just say that the, I find that if we become too specific in terms of seasonal restrictions or certain day of the week restrictions on things like modest music, it is not only impossible for county staff to enforce, but it's impossible for the property owner to even keep track of what they're being asked to do or not do. So I just want to make sure that we're not being overly discriminatory toward an applicant if they're already on the one side of the property, looking at a food establishment that by right can have music and have a nano brewery that we permitted previously that had restrictions that it sounds, restrictions related to music sounds like work pretty well in terms of not disturbing the peace. I'm not, I don't want to be in the business of turning Sperryville into whatever the paper wrote Breweryville. But this is an applicant that came in and asked for a special exception. We need to look at it on the merits. But when we do that, I also want to make sure that the conditions are reasonable, consistent, not arbitrary, not capricious, and don't lead our county government into later problems in terms of how we reached a zoning decision. And finally, finally, sorry, I would like to understand what property owners were notified and what was required under our zoning ordinance. Maybe you could speak to the notification and the music language.
Absolutely. So state code requires us to notify jointy property owners, whether it be across the street, river, right away, doesn't matter. Those were sent out and notified to those owners. I have an entire list.
We also recommend that applicants notify their neighbors, but it's not a requirement.
I see. So what Ms. Bruce was referring to is on the application, it only lists those three things. But you're saying that the county has notified the Dotsons and the adult Barbara Adolphy.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We also have a public hearing sign we put out as well.
Where's that sign located?
211.
Right on 211.
Okay.
Up front. Some of the, we did look at some of the other, one of the commissioners had requested information prior to that last June meeting on what we had required of other breweries in the area. For instance, Hopkins Ordinary, they were no amplified outdoor music. They were allowed to be 35 hours a week over a two week period. They had to close by seven. They had limited tastings. Pendrood was allowed six events with a maximum of 300 people. No amplified music after 8:00 p.m. Currently, the by right restaurant eating establishment there does not have any, that's a by right use, so it doesn't have any additional conditions attached to it.
But could it, am I correct, an eating establishment can have music? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Outdoor music?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have a noise ordinance, right?
You do have a noise ordinance.
We do not have a noise ordinance. Noise performance standards can be applied to special exceptions.
So the, so I, my brothers and I used to have a permit for the Water and Sewer Authority because Pendrood Brewing, which we've now moved to a farm, used to be down in Sperryville. And you guys will have to, given that this application moves forward, will have to deal with the Water and Sewer Authority, who have their own standards, of which we have no part. And I can tell you that having been down there for, and I'm going to forget, but I think five years, it was incredibly stringent. And I think that there, and I agree with Ms. Smith's point, that they are the professionals that are running this place. And I want to be clear that when, at least I voted to support the Water and Sewer Authority to increase the tank, it was not to put more users on it per se. There's a figure, and I'm not exactly sure what it is, but it's, the tank has never been big enough. And it just, it gets overwhelmed. And so we funded for a bigger tank so it didn't get overwhelmed, not to put more users on it. But then to Mr. Whitson's point, the driver of cost down for all the users is to have it spread out. And while we've been in these budget discussions, we need businesses in Rappahannock, absolutely. Absolutely. We have two levers to pull when it comes to collecting taxes. And I would love to see encouraging businesses more because the alternative to that is raising property taxes, which we all in this room know is very deeply unpopular. So having had a brewery down there, I understand the challenges. And, you know, I understand the challenges of being on a sewer system that has its own struggles. That said, I encourage business. And I think that what would make it comport with a by right use, to Mr. Whitson's point, would be, I would freely let you guys just set your own hours. The market will dictate, and you'll see that it just is. I mean, we close at eight. We close at seven up at Pendrood where we are now, just because not a lot happens after that. And I would say no amplified music after eight, and that's it. And you guys choose when you're going to do it. If you guys decided to can this whole thing and open a sandwich shop, you could have a liquor license and an ABC license, and you could have bans until 12. That's the reality. I mean, you could literally do that without asking anybody. So to make it comply with a by right use, I mean, I do think that that, at least after eight, would be sensitive to the neighbors. Because I know where you guys live. You know where I live. You know your neighbors. And we do need business in Rappahannock. And so I do support this. I just want to make sure that our local government is over regulating you when you could just literally do something else that's very similar and be much freer. So I want to just strike that balance. I'm not saying that the Planning Commission didn't strike that balance. I'm speaking from my personal experience. We closed our brewery at seven. We don't even have live music. That's just our choice. So that's what I would say. I think among the recommendations and the conditions, I would just change number seven to no set hours. You guys choose your own business. Businesses tend to pick their hours better than the government does. And on number eight, I would say just set that limit at 8:00 p.m.
If I could just interject about hours. You know, there's no limit if you say you can operate anytime. I mean, they could have somebody come pick up something in the middle of the night. That could be really disturbing to the neighbors. There's people that live right across the street from them. And frankly, the hours are substantial expansion of the originally requested hours.
I think my, I guess what I was saying was just that they could do a sandwich shop and do this, that. I mean, they could. They could have a liquor license and a license for beer and wine. They could sell a bunch of different stuff. They could have a jewelry shop. And you could, you could get an ABC license and a lot of people to drink in there until 2:00 in the morning. That's just the rules. I mean, ABC has their own rules when you go to get a retail license. You're going to get a manufacturing license. So that's what I was saying. I mean, I mean, if you, if you want to set a limit, I mean, I just don't, I just, I just get a little weird about the government telling a business when to do it. When those by right businesses, we don't even have that restriction in our zoning ordinance. Right? Am I wrong?
Because they're by right.
No, I know. But I'm saying for the by right uses, we don't have a set time that says you can't be open at like 2:00.
No, because when we, when they, when we entertain what would be appropriate to be by right, we go through the thought process of what would be involved in that business.
Right, so they could open a bar with a restaurant. And there wouldn't be a thing in our ordinance that would say, oh, by the way, you have to close at X.
That's correct, but that's not what they're doing.
Well, I'm just saying it's so similar. Now, you can do some kinds of food, but because you're going to be a commercial brewery, like it's interesting in Virginia, you can't typically have an onsite, on premise, ABC license without food. And so, you know, you kind of work that out as you guys work that out. But that was just my point. In our ordinance, we don't have that for the by right uses.
So you're not concerned about those people that live right behind them on Water Street?
Absolutely.
Not being able to hear music over there?
Yeah, I am.
And Diane, two streets over, being able to hear it?
I am, I'm saying.
So are you agreeable to the language that we've used before for noise? That it not be above? That it not be above the decibels that we've previously approved for other applications?
Yeah, sure.
At the, at the property line?
Yeah, like a decimal limit. Yeah, I think my point was is that just, I would say no amplified music after eight. And they'll just figure it out.
Yeah. And I'd say no amplified music after eight is fine, but I would also include in either one of the noise restrictions we've placed before. And that way, we know that you all can have music. But it won't be a problem for the neighbors. And if it is, then they'll file a complaint and, and that'll be done.
Because we've done that for a lot of different.
Yeah, R S M was the most recent one.
And that would allow you guys at the edge of the property. It'll never, you, you, you can manage that. It's not, and I think it's when it gets extreme. But I just feel like that that's never going to happen.
So it's no amplified music after eight, and then what in terms of noise limits?
I mean, there were the two, there were the two examples that I read previously.
It was the one we did for Blue Rock.
I, I didn't get that example. But the one for R S M is the use shall not cause noise greater than sixty-five decibels on an A weighted scale measured at a shared property line with tax, with this tax map, and then reference the property's tax map. And then I would say at any time. So even when you're having amplified music, you know, at the property lines, it should be like, I can pull up the examples of sixty-five decibels, but.
May I ask you?
Sure.
Can I just ask you directly?
Yeah.
So we're not.
Come out and speak in the mic, please.
I should too.
Yes.
Such a booming voice. So we're not talking in the abstract. What are you all intending to do with music?
Mainly just have background music, except for like the six events a year.
Oh, the events is, that's a, that's an important point. Yeah, I was thinking, I was more focused on the day-to-day, which Kevin described.
The day-to-day were like what Kevin was describing.
Is your day-to-day.
Yeah.
But this, I think this really comes down to the events.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I would say and no, no higher than sixty decibels at any of the property lines at any time. And that's normal human conversation.
So I, I definitely agree with no amplified music after eight, period. I think when you get into, the, the point about the other businesses on the same site is excellent. Whether they were by right or not, it's excellent. So if Black Twig has a concert and then, you know, that Wednesday, someone complains about Rising Water Brewery, so, you know, they might get, anyway. I think that gets too, I just like things to be fair across the board. And I think in that area, that works. No amplified music after eight. Hours of operation, I, I hear what everybody is saying. Yeah, my guess is your business will dictate your, your hours of operation. However, you know, on a Saturday night, I don't want to be trying to go to bed at ten o'clock and I'm hearing all kinds of noise. I just told everybody how boring I am.
Stay up till ten?
You know, hey. So, so there's that. And then the other thing, you know, the talking about the notifying the neighbors and everything. I just want to point out, there have been several times over the course of the time I've been on the board, when we've talked about special use permits or, or things that involve neighbors. And I'll often say, it's always about being a good neighbor. And I have been told that I'm too naive and that's just real, not realistic. But I do want to share what I just witnessed with the prior applicant, application. And I'm not going to try and pronounce your, your name. And I cannot remember your constituent's name.
That's Rachel.
I know Rachel.
And that's Wendell Orphelia.
So, you know, she had questions. They couldn't all be answered. She had concerns. She walked over before she left. I saw her walk over and hand her, her contact information. So wherever we land with this measuring the decibels and all that stuff, I just want to look to you, unto you, and remind you, it's about being a good neighbor. So if I know you're going to have a concert and I'm Diane's neighbor, I, you know, I live where Diane lives. If you invite Diane to that concert, chances are she might not complain. She might come over and have a beer. So, you know, I just felt like watching that, it was so little and I didn't know if anybody else noticed that, that I'm just, again, so much of this stuff is about being a good neighbor. And in a county of seven thousand three hundred people, we should be able to manage that. So now, back to you and the decibels. What are we talking about?
Well, I mean, I, I thought that we had worked through the hours and all of that, and it was agreeable to the applicant at the planning commission. So I have to say, I'm a little taken aback that apparently people aren't happy.
What do you, what are you going to say about the hours? I mean, I, I think Ben makes a valid point, but.
Hey, I was only speaking from my own. If you don't want to do that.
I mean, I thought our recommendation was really quite expansive.
I, I think like Ben said, that the business and the people we see coming, you know, we're not just going to be open sitting there, you know, running lights and power and utility bills for no reason, like. We're, we're trying to open a successful business, not, you know, be throwing money out the door, so.
Is condition seven the way it's phrased acceptable to you?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, ten to eight and until ten Friday and Saturday, that's a lot of hours.
It precludes the need to come up with a breakfast beer.
And it's more than what was in the original application. The original application looked like one date.
I think my rub is that I just don't feel comfortable with our local government telling a business, and this is just me, what hours they can be open. And I think that there's some health, safety, and welfare when you get into the late period. I do agree with that. But, you know, that's just a sticking point for me.
So Black Twig's open seven days a week? Closed on Wednesday? Okay. I'm surprised you don't want to be open on Monday. There's so many Monday holidays.
Yeah, I mean, we take advantage of that.
Three-day weekends.
I guess that's what I'm saying, is that like, I just am a firm believer in businesses sort of being agile and being able to do their own facilitation. And so I just wouldn't want to do something here that would preclude you from doing something and then not being in compliance with your permit on a federal holiday, which would be a Monday.
It's written they can be open on Monday.
No, you should be out. Yeah, you'd be out Thursday.
It's time to, it's time to eight Sunday through Thursday.
It's up to you guys. But I would recommend us letting you set your hours and no amplified music after eight. And then if you wanted to do a decimal limit at the edge, I think, I, I think sixty-five would be reasonable. And I think that you, that would be really comfortable because sixty-five is actually pretty loud.
Especially if you have the speakers going towards two eleven, it's not.
Well, there's the river. Nobody really knows how the noise is going to travel around the river. That's always.
Remember when I brought up the thing about bass?
Yes.
It's bass, it's bass will travel miles, even if it's very low.
And there's no telling.
Yeah, it goes for miles. It's wild.
That was exactly what was going through my mind when we were talking about this application. I couldn't wait to hear you talk about it again.
Everybody's eyes glazing over.
Yes, it's just different, man. I'm just telling you, it's different.
All right, so let's.
Okay, what are we brought in on?
So I think, I think we can agree no amplified music after eight. So put a period after eight P M.
Yes.
Strike the rest.
Hold on.
Is this, are you making a motion?
I'm, I'm not dictating. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to advance the process. So we have, we can all land on something that can be the basis for a motion if anyone wants to make it. And if you don't like it, I'm just trying to move us along.
Appreciate it.
Well, I thought it, I thought it was no amplified music at any time, but allow unamplified music was what somebody was proposing.
No, I think it's no amplified music after eight P M, period. Plus whatever, and I, plus we're going to hand some decimal thing on there, right?
So Friday or Saturday night. I bet it won't be void of initia because it's an expansion beyond what the planning commission recommended?
No, the, the conditions don't work that way. An ordinance might, but conditions can be modified up and put to the time that a motion is made and a special exception is adopted.
It's rough because people are going to think that that was what we were talking going to do, but.
We do it all the time. I mean, we play with conditions. We ask applicants if they agree. Sometimes we change them.
Well, if that's what you all want to do, then I would just ask that you, that we lower the decibel slightly to sixty decibels, which is normal human conversation at any property line or point beyond because of the way sound travels.
And you'll probably only have to deal with that for a couple of events until you can determine that you're operating in a good neighbor, technically correct, decibel level way. And once you establish that, then you guys will know what you can do within reason to be good neighbors. And I think that's where we're all headed.
Do you guys feel okay with that condition of the decibel level?
I, I thought there is some, sorry. I, I thought there was something looking through the ordinance about decibels.
In the performance standards, they, there are, there are noise standards that can be applied. They're not prescriptive, and a condition can be imposed with the intent to render the special use consistent with an underlying by right use.
It's not a noise ordinance. It's, it basically gives us wiggle room to do what we're trying to do here, which is to rein you in on a not by right use a little bit. So that's, yeah. It's, so we're just crafting a condition using those performance standards. But it's not a noise, county doesn't have a noise ordinance. Trust me, I hear from people all the time complaining about everything. We don't have a noise ordinance. We're country.
And then the only other thing that I would mention, which we spent quite a bit of time on and thank Ms. Summers for her work, is that we did look quite exhaustively at the parking situation. And there was well beyond the percentage necessary required to accommodate parking. But I would just say, and I, I know you all probably think I'm obsessed with parking, but it would be terrible if parking spilled out onto two eleven and something were to happen. It's a major arterial roadway and it, it could get really bad. So I know you all have plans about how to share your information and events and how to park people efficiently. And we're really counting on you to do that. And it is a, it is a condition of your permit that that will be done, that people will not be parking on the size of two eleven.
Yeah, can't happen.
It should be easy.
And is the landowner okay with parking and figuring out? If, if overflow is needed, the question is grass?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And we've expanded the back service road space, so employees are using more of that space currently than they previously did.
I really do appreciate how you control what goes on on your property and when. And I think this fits very well with what you have with Black Twig and Golf and everything else that goes on on that property. So I think it's a great idea.
And plus, that parking lot did not used to be lined.
Yep.
A lot more capacity, right?
Efficient.
Snow in October, motorcycles. They love you.
Everybody loves it in October, not just motorcycles.
Good point.
That's right.
Yep.
All right. So then I would make a motion that the board approve this application with the recommended conditions passed on from the planning commission with the one significant change being no amplified music after eight P M, period. At no time shall noise exceed sixty decibels at any shared property line or points beyond.
Second? Sorry, were you done?
I think so, as long as that's clear enough for everyone.
I thought it was.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Again, thank you to the applicant for bearing with us as we work through the application. Sometimes it's the same conversation until we get to a usually agreeable conclusion.
All right. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck with the sewer authority.
I've already been in attendance at some meetings.
See you Thursday.
All right, just stall for time and get Ben done.
Oh, my gosh, well, your technology was so, it was like, what?
The gap, the grass, I bet it's incested. It's a, it's a eyesore mess and money pit.
What you, what you said to this one was perfect. What are you talking about?
I can't imagine. I can't imagine.
Sometimes people, like.
It'll all work out, Gary. It's only the truth. Well, hopefully the lights come on. Sometimes people think the worst.
All right, we'll go up and, go ahead and tee up public hearing, special exception twenty-five dash zero three dash zero three.
Something not in Piedmont District, hooray.
Wakefield.
Ms. Hubbard has requested a special exception for an accessory dwelling unit for her property located at sixty Headwaters Road. Pursuant to one seventy thirty-six A and one seventy sixty-two G, the property is eight point nine seven acres in size and it is zoned village residential. She has proposed to convert the area over the existing garage into the A D U for her daughter to live in, and she would live in the main house. B dot had no objections to this request. The Health Department reported that the site has an existing and approved application with them to install a septic system and a drain field for four bedrooms. This system will be adequate to support the proposed dwelling with a maximum occupancy of eight people and a six hundred gallon per day water usage. The existing well has a water flow rate of twenty-five gallons per minute, which is sufficient to support both structures. One area of concern that staff has pointed out and spoken with the applicant with, and they understand this, is per our code regulations, one seventy sixty-two G, it states if such living space in a structure that's not a single-family dwelling, it must be served by separate entrance to the outside of the structure in which it is contained. And there could be no excess connection between the A D U and the balance of the structure. The applicant had advised the planning commission that there is an interior passage of stairs to the upstairs of the garage. But it does have a separate door at ground level for the second floor, the proposed A D U level to be used. The planning commission held their public hearing on May twenty-first, in which they recommended approval by vote of six to zero, pending that the owners submit a sketch of the layout showing how she planned to mitigate and fall within the twelve hundred square foot requirement. And that revised plan was attached to board docs. The applicant and her daughter are present if anyone has any questions. This was advertised for two consecutive weeks and all property owners, adjacent property owners were notified.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
What was the planning commission vote on this?
I think it was unanimous.
Okay. I just looked it up.
All right, at this time, anyone wishing to speak, I'll open the public hearing. Please be recognized and come on up. Thank you.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. The applicant purchased the property at sixty Headwaters Road in September of twenty twenty-four. There's an existing three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath dwelling in addition to the separate two-story four-car garage. The application lists the owner applicant addresses in Front Royal in Strasburg, not the subject property. Throughout the application, the Front Royal address is listed as the owner's address. At the planning commission meeting, the applicant acknowledged. At the planning commission meeting, the applicant acknowledged the subject property is rented and is not her primary residence. The prior family apartment provision of our ordinance that preceded the current A D U provision required a justification for family use, as well as a minimum two-year family occupancy period before any rental to non-family members. At a minimum, there should be a requirement that a property be the current legal primary residence of an owner before an application for an A D U is considered and that the justification for seeking the special exception is for family need. One seventy sixty-two G of our ordinance states that an A D U cannot be more than twelve hundred square feet. The commissioner of the revenue property card notes the area over the separate two-story four-car garage is twenty-eight feet by fifty-two in size, which is one thousand four hundred fifty-six square feet. The original sketch with the application notes thirteen one thousand three hundred seventy-seven square feet. At the planning commission meeting, it was suggested to the applicant that they reduce the overall square footage of the proposed A D U to be in compliance with our ordinance by designating a portion as storage. The revised sketch, which was up on the board, the revised sketch shows what had been a second bedroom in the center of the A D U as now storage area with the same access to the center hallway in the A D U. The prior room previously noted as an office is now labeled as the second bedroom. The storage space proposed in the middle of the A D U is problematic. One seventy sixty-two G one states, in no case shall accessory space be converted to residential occupancy and the board is empowered to impose such conditions as will render such conversion unlikely, including but not limited to floor pans, means of ingress egress, et cetera. Our ordinance also states that if such living space is in a structure other than a single family home that includes other accessory space, then it must be served by a separate entrance to the outside of the structure in which it is contained. And there can be no access connection between the A D U and the balance of the structure. Both sketches note an access entrance to the first floor garage. The access stairs noted as steps from garage are interior. It's unclear if there is an existing exterior access. The stairs access from the first floor accessory space cannot be used as an access to an A D U per our ordinance. If there is a separate outside access for the second level as required, and if it is the board's intent to grant the special exception request, which I would suggest that's a concerning precedence if it's not a primary residence, then I would suggest that any storage area proposed to mitigate the twelve hundred square foot issue be on the end where the garage stairs are and that if they're, and that there is a solid wall that assures no access to the A D U. There's also a discrepancy in the number of bedrooms being proposed that should be clarified on page seventeen and again on page twenty-two of the application. There are notations, proposed three-bedroom apartment over garage, but on both versions of the sketch, it notes two bedrooms and a room identical in size as either one bedroom, first noted as an office and now storage. The Virginia Department of Health permit for the separate septic drain field to serve the proposed A D U is for four bedrooms. The applicant owns other properties in both Front Royal and on Headwaters Road, and it bears repeating that a special exception is just that. It's special. It's an exception. It's not a by right use. It should be a mechanism only used for a demonstrated justification for family need. I would suggest this application at best is premature. If the applicant intends for this property to be her primary legal residence with a separate accessory space for her daughter to reside in, then there should be a requirement that it be her current legal primary residence of record before an A D U application is considered. I would also just raise the point of what happens to a special exception use after the fact. We as a county should be mindful of permitting special exceptions on top of special exceptions. There have been a growing number of situations where a special exception has been granted for one use and then down the road, somebody comes back in for a different special exception for expansion or change of use on the same property.
Not to interrupt you, but I'm going to interrupt you. I didn't set a time, so that's my bad, but it's been five minutes so far, so.
Okay, I'm one, two left. If the property receives a special exception for an A D U and the intent should be to serve a family need, then the A D U should not be eligible to then be converted, for example, to a tourist home at a later date. We've had fairly recent examples of this. In light of all this, I would urge the board to deny this application, but if it's their intent to approve, the storage location with no connection to the balance of the A D U and separate access from the accessory space below need to be resolved for this to be in accordance with our ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Yes, ma'am.
Nita Ramos, Hampton District. I want to agree with Ms. Hunt, particularly about the fact that the owner of this property is not living on the property while they're asking for this and expecting it to happen. She can move on to the property and then ask, but not beforehand. I just totally don't understand. The other thing is, there was a mention here about housing eight people in a two-bedroom house? No. Just plain old no. That's too many people. And the whole setup for a storage room looks to me like something that can be finished later on and turned into a bedroom. And we have no way of knowing because it's right smack in the middle of the apartment. So, I'm, the downstairs having it separate from the rest of the building is, I think, more of a fire kind of situation, probably someone came up with years ago to create like a firewall so the two, whatever is upstairs and downstairs are not connected to each other. And that's a wall. They need to put in that wall and they need to have a better layout. They need to have somebody professionally do it because certainly they, to my mind, they have not done it right the first time and they haven't done it right the second time.
Thank you, Nita. All right. There seems to be one person on Zoom. If you're interested in speaking with this public hearing, please raise your Zoom hand. All right. We'll close the public hearing. And Ms. Smith, do you mind answering some of those kind of concerns?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, are there photos of the house? Because I thought there were two doors to the house.
There are, what she said is false.
Yeah, well, we need to look at it and not do this he said, she said thing, which I don't really have patience for. Yes, ma'am, but this is a different group. So, I am speaking, trying to help you and clarify this point. And if I should need your expertise, I will certainly ask you to help me. Ms. Summers, my recollection is that there's two doors to the house and the one is accessed from the lower level, but there is a newly installed door that is accessed to the level for this proposed use, which we saw at the planning commission. Thought there was a new door installed.
So, according to the, to the property owner, there's the entrance to the garage, the first level, but there's also a separate entrance to the second level that is ground level up and behind it because it's built into the bank.
Which we had a photo of at the planning commission of that door. Now, my recollection that the direction to the applicant from the planning commission was that in considering how to approach, how to navigate the requirements of an A D U, the way to lay out the structure would be for the lower level access to be leading to the storage area. And you cut off that space and make it a separate storage area, only not accessible from the A D U. And then the, the entrance at the same level, which is the new door, be the A D U entrance and that that only encompassed twelve hundred square feet, square hundred twelve, twelve hundred square feet. What we're seeing in this rendering in front of us today is not at all what the planning commission complicated, recommended in its vote, in my opinion, because the layout is not what we discussed at the planning commission.
Now, can I go?
It's up to the chair.
Ma'am, if you want to speak, please come up to the mic.
So, um.
Do you give us your name too, please?
The garage.
Ma'am, can I have your name too, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Lisa Hubbard. And that's my daughter Nicole. The garage is, the structure on the inside is not fourteen hundred and fifty square feet. It's exactly what I said, thirteen hundred and we'll say seventy feet because they're, they're going by the exterior, which is block and then brick. The interior was, is already framed in. It's not fourteen hundred square feet. So, the gentleman at the prior meeting said, because it's, it is a little over twelve. Take, take part of that structure and make it a storage room. Now, I can take the two hundred or, it's not even two hundred, the hundred and seventy-five feet, and I can take it away anywhere in, in that building on the upstairs. It's, it, because it isn't built yet. But my layout was, I did have, because my daughter's going to move in, I'm going to move in. What my plan is, my other daughter lives below. I mean, we have all the houses all there. And I wanted that house so we could all go there. And so, it's all on one level, which is what I need. I'm sixty-nine. I can't do steps. Closing off the access to the bottom part is no problem because it's already, you know, I bought this house and it was already framed up upstairs. And there's a, a door that covers the stairway. I can make that permanent so that the only way in is through the back door. And I didn't add that back door. It was always there. I just put in a new one because it was all dilapidated. The only thing I've done up on that mountain is improve it. All the properties that I've got up there with my other daughter are all were dilapidated. I've made it nicer. I maintain the road because the state road doesn't even come up there. I, I maintain my own road. And true, I can't, I'm not living there now, but I can't afford to leave it sit empty. I'm, I'm trying to sell off enough stuff to pay it off. And so, you know, I did stick a renter in there so I could afford to keep the place until I'm able to pay it off. I can't have a, a three thousand dollar mortgage. I can't afford it. I don't have the money. And the properties that I own in Front Royal, they're mistaken about that. One of those was in my name. I was building a house for my other younger daughter, which is now, she's moved in.
You don't need to address their statements. You just need to talk about the house.
So, we want to, my, my middle daughter lives here. This house is here. There's only one other person up on the mountain and he's, they're divorcing and he's selling out. So, it's just us. And it's nine acres. You know, the garage is already there. It was there when I bought it. It's huge. It's going to make a nice apartment. And, and she's going to move there. And then I'm going to get the big house. Their lease is up in, in October and then we can do our plan. That's all. I'm, I'm just trying to improve the place.
And eight acres in Chester Gap is.
Pardon me?
Eight acres in Chester Gap is amazing.
Ma'am, sure. Can I, sorry, you were still going.
No, you're fine.
Okay. I had some questions for the applicant and then I had maybe one or two questions for the county and/or zoning administrator. So, direct question, how many square feet will this accessory dwelling unit be when it's completed?
Twelve hundred square feet.
Thank you. How close to your house will that accessory dwelling unit be, meaning the primary house?
I'd say maybe two hundred feet. It's pretty.
Is it more than two hundred feet or is it two hundred feet?
I'd say about two hundred feet. The house is here and the garage is over here.
We didn't have a problem with that at the planning commission. The only thing that anyone took issue with was the square footage of the, of the home and how to break that out.
But my question is, does it meet the requirement, which is two, within?
It appears to be less than a hundred feet.
Less than a hundred feet. Okay. So, it's going to be twelve hundred square feet. It's going to be within two hundred feet of your house.
Yes.
It has a separate entrance?
Yes.
Where are your neighbors? Are they here tonight?
No.
Are they shouting and complaining about what you want to do?
No.
Where are they?
I only have one and he lives in Warrenton. He's not even there.
Right. Thank you. Okay. So, my question then for the county or zoning administrator is this, other than square feet, other than location and proximity to the primary dwelling unit on a property, when someone is seeking a special exception for an accessory dwelling unit, what else am I missing that's in our ordinance that dictates whether or not an accessory dwelling unit meets the requirements of our ordinance?
The, the only issue here is that, is the interconnectivity between the storage room and the twelve hundred square feet. We went through this with another one recently and the individual had to have them separate. You're not supposed to be able to go from one to the other. And I think that's in so people don't subvert the twelve hundred square foot limit.
So, yeah. And so, to the extent that's important, okay. What I, what I don't like about these applications, or what I don't like about the reaction to these applications, is we are under constant pressure to find ways to provide affordable, economically sensible housing to allow people to live in Rappahannock County. And so, when applications like this come in, that's what I look at first. And this, I'm taking your word for it, is exactly what you're intending to do. Once people can't win on that argument, that is, you're a mother, you're a daughter, you want to live close to one another, it's twelve hundred square feet, it's within two hundred feet of our house, you just checked all the boxes in our ordinance, then we get in all this other stuff. We heard one recently where someone was complaining about the license plates on the cars in the driveway, being from Florida and therefore these people didn't have a vested interest in living in our community, when in fact, the truth was, they wanted their son to live next door to them and they happened to have cars with Florida license plates that by now are probably Virginia license plates. I'm not going to listen to all the noise and get distracted from your application, which as far as I'm concerned is fine and it meets our ordinance requirements except for the one issue of this.
Square feet.
The square feet. If you can meet that and you can.
I can make that area anywhere you want it in there. I just, I was looking at my drawing and I was like, well, we just got to get rid of one, one bedroom and we'll have it.
If you meet the requirements, I don't know why we're talking about all this other stuff.
I would just say that if I have a storage area in my house, in the middle of my house and it's only accessible by a window, then that is considered square footage for my house. This, that's the only issue with this, is that the storage area wasn't put in the right place.
So, let's resolve that and move on. I mean, the, all this other stuff about where you live and what you might or might not do, none of that's articulated in our ordinance. I don't think that's reasonable for that to be put on you. We have an ordinance and we're trying to follow it. And it sounds like, except for this one small issue, which hopefully we can figure out, it's fine. And the planning commission approved this unanimously, right?
Yes.
Right. So, the storage area needs to be accessible from outside and not from within the building, correct?
Not from within the A D U.
And you need to come up to steps from downstairs into the storage area.
We don't care how you get to it.
Well, it needs to be a separate entrance than the entrance to the A D U. So, the A D U entrance needs to be the same floor entrance. So, the stair entrance needs to be the storage entrance.
Ultimately, that's up to them, as long as they're not interconnected.
I can change.
We would, we would review it at the zone, at a zoning permit level, like we did for the, a recent one, where we look at the floor plan, make sure it's twelve hundred square feet, make sure there's no interconnectivity. If it meets it, it meets it. If it doesn't, they don't get their zoning permit.
That's all we should be talking about.
Let's advance it.
Yeah.
Can we just approve that? We're it. I know we're doing this too.
Ourselves.
Yeah. You gotta, you gotta meet.
I hear a motion cooking in here.
Yeah. It's mine. It's mine.
I'm sorry, 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 sorry. Sorry, there we go.
All right. I'm going to move to approve special exception number twenty-five dash zero three dash zero three with the following conditions, which are the same ones that we just went through. Are they not?
Well, no, actually, there are requirements of the ordinance, so they're not conditions.
Yeah.
It meets one seventy sixty-two G.
And that'll, that'll get handled in the building zoning office. And I don't think it's reasonable to throw a bunch of other stuff your way to distract from the question. The question is twelve hundred square feet next to your house.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
I just thought you all were darling at the planning commission. Thank you for coming back again to see us this evening.
Thank you.
This is very, very nice.
I know, I know. It's scary saying.
It's no, it's notable that nobody from Chester Gap is here shouting you down and I think that is worth noting.
And the fact that you know that you have to take care of your own road is massive.
And the next time somebody criticizes us for not doing our part to expand affordable housing in the county, this is what we should be approving. And by the way, 69 is not that old, so stop saying.
All right, all right, all right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to come see it. Yep.
I'll come see you.
All right. Where are we? All right, public comment.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that one.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open public comment. Let's make it three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized. Yes, ma'am.
Nita Ramos Hampton District, this afternoon you talked about talking to the school board about budgets and unfunded mandates came up a whole lot of times. My suggestion is among, not just talking to the school board, but talk to your members of the general assembly. Actually, even put them in here and say, you keep putting on unfunded mandates to the counties and counties like this can't deal with it. That's the problem. And it, when the schools get told they got to have, I don't know, I'll use the word, like a school psychologist and it's a small school, well, a big school system can have dozens. But a small system to pay for a full-time person is awfully, awfully expensive and maybe it would be nice if they were told they could have a part-time person in some of these kind of positions. So, I think it's time to talk to the general assembly people and say, quit doing this to us because that's what's hurting us so much all the time when it comes to the budget. And we just went through it with the assistant attorney. Also, um, when it comes to re, re-reviewing what the departments do, I'm, along with Mrs. Comer, um, I worked for, oh, that dirty word, Fairfax County, and we got told quite often, many, many years, we had to look at what our budgets were and what we could do the next year to make them a little bit less or a little bit less. And I'm talking as, as an employee who spent four years of my career without getting a raise. Why? Because the cuts were on the backs of the employees. And I'm not fond of it, but that's just the way it had to be then. So, whatever. It's good to have the departments all look and see what they might have to do. And it's not always taking away personnel, it may be deciding that you're all going to have to live with a, a little bit less, um, you know, in the paycheck or, uh, different materials that you may wish you could have or really would like to have, but don't necessarily need to have on a particular year. We can always hope that days get better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thought you were going to speak.
Mr. Schreier, don't want to speak, Michelle? I trust you, she wouldn't need more than 30 seconds.
Oh, I didn't, sorry, Diane.
Yeah, I'm back. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, make some comments on, in, in regard to what Mr. Whitson said following my presentation this afternoon. This is, uh, from a, uh.
And you're speaking to the entire board today.
Yeah, and not, not calling anyone out, which was my point. Uh, and my point will be what I'm about to make here. First Amendment protections for public comment at government meetings. This was written by David L. Hotson Jr., Associate Professor of Law at Belmont University. And there are many other articles that pertain to this. The First Amendment principles of public comment periods. Perhaps the most fundamental of all First Amendment free speech principles is that individuals have the right to speak at public meetings, which include the free speech right to criticize the government. The U.S. Supreme Court claimed this core democratic principle in New York Times for, New York Times Company versus Sullivan, 1964, writing of our profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasant sharp attacks on government and public officials. During public comment periods, government officials must tolerate viewpoints they disagree with or dislike, such as the nature of being a public official in a robust democracy. The court memorably wrote in the flag burning decision, Texas versus Johnson, 1989, there is a bedrock principle underlying the First Amendment. It is that the government may not prohibit the expression of an idea simply because it finds it offensive or disagreeable. Third, the government generally may not discriminate against speech based on its content or viewpoint. The Supreme Court articulated this clearly in Chicago Police Department versus Mosley, 1972, writing, above all else, the First Amendment means that the government may not restrict the speech because of its message, its ideas, subject matter, or its content. The First Amendment law, government officials cannot discriminate against speech based on content or especially on viewpoint. And in conclusion, when government bodies establish public comment periods, they must adhere to the fundamental First Amendment principles. They cannot shut down or silence speakers simply because they've, they offered a disavial, offered a disfavored viewpoint or criticize government officials. The essence of a free society is that members of the public have the ability to voice their opinions, including ones critical of government officials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Diane Bruce Spargill, I'm just having too much fun. Look at all the notes I've taken. And these notes are all over the place, but pretty much based on tonight's meeting. Enforcement, the 50 gallon bucket of beer?
Five.
Five gallon bucket of beer, I'm sorry. Anyhow, who's going to enforce that?
Uh, the sewer authority does.
They're able to?
Yeah, quite strictly.
I had, they check our F line.
And the 60 decibels, who has a noise meter?
Anybody with a cellphone.
I was going to say, I think there's an app for that. I know that the folks that live next to our sign pretty consistently check.
It is a QD because she's, she's.
Check the decibels of their neighbor.
She used to run the county, so.
Well, I just remember the county, uh, did away with the noise ordinance because we had an issue here in the town of Washington and the people who own the property made a lot of noise. County wouldn't do anything about it, bothered the town, so the town boundary got moved. And it was because we didn't have a decibel meter and they didn't want to have one and, you know, who was, who was going to do it? So, in this case, who would be called to do it? The sheriff's office?
Well, it's self-policing too.
Yeah, okay, just curious.
Well, as you know, Diane, most zoning issues are complaint-driven.
It's a public comment.
Sorry.
It's just it's Diane, it's hard enough to be.
Because we're all having fun.
Sorry.
Okay, I, I don't, I mean, if, if using an app is, is adequate, that's fine, I didn't know about that. The application where I mentioned that the application requires them to list all the people they have, uh, sent the notice to and it gives them that instruction. Now, yes, the zoning office took care of that, but I didn't know that and I brought that up and I bothered you all and, you know, I bothered me and so, correct the, correct the application. On, there's more.
Check.
Yeah, one, two, three. On the special page of the website for Rappahannock County, there is, on the green thing that comes up as you open the website, it says, click on this and you get the whole courthouse file folder. Anyhow, it won't download. So I've been to other places and I've asked other people to download it and we can't download it. There is a.
What about Sir Joel Azana?
Yeah, I don't know, but I don't have any way of looking at this whole application about the courthouse because I can't get it to open. Uh, but, and apparently it is there.
Then just opened it.
Mine works.
Did you open the little, the little, uh, thing that, well, maybe show me, show it to me when the meeting is over, okay.
We're almost over three minutes, so.
Am I already? It's because y'all are talking to me. You're, you're delaying this thing. Okay, so in the staff report.
She spends too much time around lawyers.
In the staff report, I, I don't know who all these abbreviations are. Any number of staff reports, who's the RRC, who's the CAD? So couldn't you have a list somewhere of what all those abbreviations are so that when we read your staff reports, we'll know who we're talking about? And last but not least, I was looking at your agenda and you were reviewing legal matters and one of them on your agenda today had to do with Harmony Manor. Says the appeal was delayed until August 5, 2024, which is almost a year ago. Has anything happened with Harmony Manor or is it still delayed because the Board of Supervisor, they were waiting for, approval was delayed until the August 20, August 5, 2024, Board of Supervisor minutes are approved. The BOs are approved for a year ago. So whatever happened to the Harmony Manor, uh, legal matters?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
No? Um, okay, I'm going to Zoom. We have a couple of people, if you're interested in public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. All right, seeing a Zoom hand, I will close public comment. And now we're on appointment to the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board.
I'm just going to move this along if nobody minds. Move to appoint Assistant County Administrator Bonnie L. Joel as the county's representative to the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board.
I'll second that.
That sounds like a great meeting.
If Ms. Joel is so willing.
She is.
She is.
Well-versed, I'm sure.
A lot of secondhand smoke.
We have a motion and a second.
How often does this group meet?
All, any conversation?
Can you just picture?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
If you come back smelling like smoke, we'll know that you went to the meeting.
Uh, budget amendment to reflect final revenue sources.
I'll, I'll put forward a motion, uh, to adopt a revenue adjustment option one, which I think is what we're all expecting and it assumes the adoption of cigarette tax ordinance and also the adoption of the building and zoning fee increase and the related revenue generated from those two actions that we took earlier tonight. So, I'll, I'll, I move that we go with option one, which is just a straight, uh, replacement of the four to six on meals and lodging and related revenue with, um, fund balance, uh, to the tune of 280.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we, um, continue. I don't know if I need to move to continue, but for the record, I'll move that we continue this meeting because it's just been fun and we should just keep going to 6:00 PM, Monday, July 21st, in this room for a work session, which will focus entirely on the courthouse project.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, everybody, for sticking around.
Thank you.
Thank you.